Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors for December 6, 2011. Yay. Roberta, could you please call the roll? Supervisor Bennett. Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
Here.
And Supervisor Parks.
Here. This morning, we are fortunate to have a very special woman from my district here today, and hopefully we'll keep her as long as we can. I've heard rumors that she may be moving. But Linda Miller is here, and she has established an organization called Support for the Kids. She's the president and founder of this organization. It's a nonprofit that provides private tutoring at no cost of Ventura County foster care children who are struggling in school. So the organization has operated for 11 years, with all private donations helping to provide approximately 100 children a year with tutoring. According to statistics from the Children's Advocacy Institute, 46 percent of the 4,000 use in California foster care system failed to complete high school, 46 percent. Through Support for the Kids, 80 percent of over 1,000 students served over the years have graduated high schools. That really shows you what one person can do particularly, but how important it is to give that extra help to foster children. I'm going to ask Linda to come and tell us a little about our organization. I know that she's also been very involved in something quite recently that she can talk about too for our military.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you for the invitation to be here today. I would like to introduce my husband, Kerry, who's with me, who's my right-hand person in everything that we do. Support for the Kids was a vision I had many years ago. I started out as a big sister in Orange County, and 20 years ago, we moved to Ventura County. And I wanted to continue that work. My big sister graduated from high school, moved away. So I came out to the interface office and checked into being a big sister. And they said, "Well, you know, we've got quite a few big sisters right now. We're starting a new program called CASA, Court Appointed Special Advocates, and we'd really like you to do that." Well, I don't know. It was different in the fact that I could never take the child home like I could when I was a big sister. So my husband could not interface with her unless he went through the training as well. She could never spend the night. I enjoyed having that little sister do all those things with me. So I went through the training, and at that time, 15, 18 years ago, it was extensive. It was two nights a week and every Saturday for two months. It was very informative. It prepared me for a very eye-opening experience. The plight of the foster child in the court system is depressing. No words to say, it just is. So I was matched up with a teenager, which nobody wants to take. And I called my case manager every day with questions and stuff. Anyway, we spent time together. Unfortunately, this girl was very angry and very depressed. And if you knew her background, you'd know why. She had no support. She was given up at the age of 12. Her dad committed suicide, and she was four. They shipped her to her paternal grandparents. He introduced her to drugs. They took them away from him, sent her to the maternal grandparents. He abused her. So she ended up in group homes. Because of her anger, her placement seemed like it was every other week. So no one was tracking her educational level. And I knew that that was her one way, if she could graduate from high school, of doing something with her life. So I stressed the education part, and she kept blowing it off and blowing it off. And she was 14, 15 at the time. But every time she would move, it was in a different school. So she'd get to school, and she got moved. She never got caught up. She was 16, and she had 12 high school units, 12. So we had to write the reports when we went into court. So I wrote my report, and I knew the judge didn't have time to read it, but he did ask me what I would recommend for her at that particular time. I said, "The same as my last year's report, someone needs to follow her education." And he said, "What do you recommend?" I said, "She needs a tutor." And he said, he turned to the attorney, and he said, "Well, get her a tutor." And he goes, "We don't have any money for that." And I said, "I'll do it." He said, "You will?" I said, "Yeah." And that was the start of Support for the Kids. I then went to group CASA meetings and realized every CASA kid was suffering with the same problem, the educational part. Why not start a nonprofit? So it began. And that was the main focus of helping the foster kids with education. We've used a private tutoring firm now for the last three years. He does remarkable work. He does bench testing. Through him, within three to four months, we can have those kids raise their grades at least one to two levels. It's amazing work. Sustain it and continue on, and get the confidence they need and stay in school. Along the way, we learned that there are many other things the kids needed, not just foster care, but underprivileged. So we branched out to helping underprivileged kids with school supplies, shoes and clothing. We figured we needed to get them to school, to keep them in school, have the tools they need to succeed in the school. So the shoes and clothing and school supplies, I can't keep up with it. The requests are daily. But it's good that we can meet them. We decided those kids needed a bit greater experiences than their parents could probably offer them. So we took them to cultural performances at Thousand Oaks Civic Arts, the Discovery Center, Pepperdine, U.S. Symphony. They gave us free tickets, usually free buses. We just made sure we got the kids there. We took them on college campus tours. We had seasonal holiday parties for them. Anything we could do to, as I call it, take them off the block mentally and physically. So our work is great. I was just expressing to Linda that I have so many volunteers. I hear it all the time from people, "I want to do something, but I don't know what it is." When they see something that's established, they know that they can do it. And we deal directly with these families and kids. They like it because they know then that they're doing, they're seeing their efforts being produced in helping. We have too many volunteers, but it's a good thing. I just told Linda too that yesterday we shipped 161 boxes to the troops. It's something I've been doing for six years because my nephew was over there, but decided to do it late at Christmas the last few years. So we sent Silver's Coffee, jerky, mints, gum, cookies, candy, books, crew socks, wherever we could stuff in the boxes. We did 161 of those, and the post office painted yesterday when we came in with all those boxes. So the work is great. It's energizing, it's inspiring every day, and it's great to see people in the community coming together to help other people. So I asked my husband to come along with me today because he is such a great supporter. It's because of him, for the last 20 years, I have not had the work, and I've been able to throw my energy and love into doing this. His wisdom, his insight, his ideas, his support in helping all these families through these years has been unbelievable. So great kudos to my husband, because I couldn't do this without him. Anyway, thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate it.
You know, you are just an example of what one person can do. You see a need out there, and all the way from realizing that one foster child could really use help with the education, and that's a way out of the cycle the child was in. So you are a real role model for many and a real inspiration. So thank you for coming. I know Supervisor Long wants to come.
Just to say the same, Linda, it's been amazing what you've done with that little seed and the ongoing now strength of the organization and volunteers is phenomenal. You're making such a difference in lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you did, you started an organization, so if you do end up in Boise, Idaho, or wherever, you will have that continue on. Thank you so much for the work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
At this time, we'll go ahead and do our pledge of allegiance. Supervisor Foy, would you like to lead us?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on the nation under our invisible liberty and justice.
And we now are at that time for a motion to adopt the minutes of our November 8 meeting. We have a motion. And we have a second from Supervisor Zaragoza. If we could please vote. Thank you. And now we'll go to our next item on the agenda. This is item six. It's our agenda review with our CEO, Mr. Michael Powers.
Thank you, Chair Parks. Good morning. Just a couple of items. First off, there's addenda, agenda, item 34, at a time certain, 10:30 a.m., to review and adopt the investment policy of the treasurer, tax collector for the Ventura County Investment Pool to become effective December 6, 2011. Then we would also request that you hear this item 34 immediately prior to the 10:30 a.m., item 23.
So 34, the 4, 10, 2?
Right. 34 essentially makes some minor adjustments to the investment policy. We also have addendum, agenda, regular agenda, Public Works Agency, item 35, which is approval of the plans and specifications, including addendums 1 through 2, wave minor bidder regularities, award of contract to Pereira Construction and Design on the basis of the lowest responsible bid for the Ventura County Healthcare Agency multi-use healthcare facility in the Caneo Valley located at 125 West Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Also request time certain, agenda, item 22, and regular agenda, item 33, be heard together at 10:30. Time certain, agenda, closed session, item 27, we've had a letter submitted by Teresa Jordan. And finally, request regular agenda, item 32, be heard at 9:45 a.m.
I hope you all help me with this one. It sounds like we've just punched in about three or four things all in there between 10:00 and 10:30. We'll make sure they're in the right order.
Yep. We'll do it. Yeah, Roberta's here. We'll keep us on a good path.
Okay, great. We did get those reports. Any other changes? Does the board have any request to pull items for discussion or otherwise? If not, do we have a motion? Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza.
I just want to share some comments on item 17.
Okay, so before we vote on 17, we'll have some comments shared.
Yes, you know, I really want to thank Jeff Pratt and Dave Fleisch for the dollars, except the safe route to school dollars for Collins and Rose Road. You know, there's thousands of cars that go down Rose Road, and I think this is great for the safety of the children of El Rio. And reading the paper every day, somebody gets run over and so forth. But I just want to thank our staff for doing an excellent job on protecting our children. I think it's extremely important that we approve this safe-to-school item. So I want to thank you, Dave and Jeff, and your staff for an excellent job.
More money for sidewalks, yes.
More sidewalks, right. Absolutely, especially there on, we have, I can't remember how many thousands of cars there is on Rose Road, but that's really great for the safety of our children. I just want to thank you for that.
Definitely safety improvement. So this motion we're having now is to accept the agenda as revised with all those suggestions from Mr. Powers. We have a motion and a second. And if we could vote, we now have a revised agenda. Yes, we do, on a 4-0. And the next item then is to look at our consent agenda items, and this is items 10 through 20. And we can now vote on those in one fell swoop. We have a motion for Supervisor Foy, a second from Supervisor Zaragoza, and an opportunity to vote again. And that will take us to our public comments section of our agenda. And look, we have some cars. Go ahead and call Kevin Correnthal. Excuse me if I get your last name. Correnthal?
Correnthal.
Correnthal, thank you. Followed by Eric Kristen.
Good morning, Honorable Supervisors. My name is Kevin Correnthal. I represent the Merritt Shop Construction Community in California, and I'm a resident of nearby Santa Clarita. I'm here today because I understand the supervisors may consider using a union-only project labor agreement on the $250 million upgrade to the Ventura County Medical Center. Since I have a great deal of experience in my career with union-only project labor agreements, I thought I would bring some perspective to the conversation for you this morning. Ventura's county, Ventura County's neighbor, Los Angeles, has seen an explosion of new project labor agreements on everything from redevelopment to school construction. This unbalanced use of PLAs comes despite no evidence that they do anything positive for the communities that use them. PLAs are known to raise the cost of construction by up to 15 percent and limit the number of contractors that can participate in the bidding process. I have provided some information on a groundbreaking university study on the use of project labor agreements in California. The Los Angeles Community College District is the best example of PLA building gone horribly wrong and is the subject of an ongoing set of reporting by the Los Angeles Times, including a six-part expose into various issues with workmanship, co-mingling of funds, and pay-for-play contracts. But the most egregious issue that I and my colleagues take with PLAs is the institutional discrimination inherent to them. Workers who choose to be employed by non-union contractors who sign onto PLAs are forced to pay union dues or representation fees while at the same time paying into medical and pension benefits that there is little, if any chance, they will ever vest in. Furthermore, non-union or unilateral apprentices that are trained under the same guidelines as union apprentices are forbidden from working on PLA projects. Previous boards have attempted to make PLAs more fair and equitable for non-union firms and their employees. But in each case, the PLA that is eventually approved differs little, if at all, from the standard discriminatory language that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors is likely to be asked to vote on. The supervisors are very wise to look into policies that can ensure that projects come in on time, on budget, and are of high quality. California's prevailing wage and apprenticeship laws are in place to assist municipalities in this endeavor. The added bureaucratic layer of project labor agreements, rather than serving these goals, actually does the opposite. Furthermore, it ensures that many local workers who are employed by non-union firms will not have the opportunity to participate on this project. Thank you, and I am submitting my comments for the record, and I appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Eric Kristen, followed by Arcelia Martinez.
Thank you. Merry Christmas and happy holidays. My name is Eric Kristen. I'm the executive director of the Coalition for Fair Employment in Construction. CFPC was formed 12 years ago explicitly to fight project labor agreements. We were formed by both union and non-union contractors who came together and saw these as an affront to the contracting business, and I have been fighting them along with the Coalition and our allies for going on 12 years now. We really have something that was made aware to us vis-à-vis a Ventura Star newspaper article last week. I then responded with an editorial that ran on Saturday in the Star with regards to project labor agreements, helping to put into context exactly what they are and what it is you may be considering down the road. This is the most controversial, divisive, discriminatory agreement within the construction industry. And while we are disappointed that it's actually even being considered when you see that they're being banned all over the state, when given a chance to go before the voters, we do believe that this is something your staff gets, and this is something we want to make sure that you get through an education process that really began with our editorial that ran Saturday and will continue on with material that I'm leaving with you today and beyond. We'll also be making sure to inform the taxpayers as to what project labor agreements are exactly all about. Specifically, they contain four things within the 65-page document that they took. If you've seen one PLA, you've seen them all. They hide behind local hire or whatever the latest excuse is as to why they're needed. The reality is, is they're an implicitly discriminatory agreement for four reasons. They force all workers, regardless of their union affiliation, to pay union dues. That can be up to $1,000 out of their first paycheck. If you're a non-union worker, that's money you'll never recover. Number two, they force all workers, regardless of their union affiliation, to pay into union health, welfare, and pension plans. That's money that will never be realized by those workers due to union vesting requirements. But more importantly, why should a non-union worker who is already receiving such benefits be forced to pay into another program they'll never receive benefits from? This is a moral issue. This is money that's being stolen from them. Thirdly, all workers have to be hired through a union hiring hall in order to be dispatched to a job. Again, that's fine unless you're one of the 86 percent of the construction workforce that happens to be union-free and doesn't operate through a union hiring hall. Number four, they explicitly discriminate against non-union apprentices, which are in state-approved and federally-approved apprenticeship programs. Every PLA, and I have witnessed hundreds of them since I've been doing this in the last 12 years, have explicitly discriminated against the apprentices. This isn't even a question. It's not implicit, it's explicit. This is why every major construction organization in the state and around the country are opposed to PLAs, all but one entity, and those are the people that represent about 16 percent of the industry, and those are union business agents. Everybody else is opposed to them, has come out opposed to them. Here's what the National Black Chamber of Commerce had to say about them. PLAs are de facto segregation. African-American workers are significantly underrepresented in all crafts of construction and union shops. PLAs are non-competitive and most of all discriminatory. Women construction owners and executives said WCOE opposes government mandated PLAs. PLAs will disproportionately impact small businesses, particularly those owned by women and minorities. I could go on down the list of those that are opposed, and I again will be leaving this material with you. Thirty-six editorials have been written in the state on PLAs. Thirty-six editorials ranging from the Orange County Register, your center-right libertarian-type paper, to the Sacramento Bee. Every editorial has come out opposed to PLAs. Not half 50/50, not 10 in favor, everyone has come out opposed. I think the Sacramento Bee put it most succinctly, "PLAs are about empowering unions, not helping workers." That's a Sacramento Bee, not the Orange County Register, not the Wall Street Journal. If you want an example of exactly what a PLA will get you, Los Angeles is a perfect example. The Los Angeles Community College District has been a mere PLA for 10 years. It's been part of a seven-front-page series, seven-story series in the LA Times about the corruption, waste, fraud, and abuse that's gone on in that program. These are not the people you want to be emulating. So we ask that you give serious consideration to this issue, look at the information that's provided, the reason that the New York Times, the Wall Street Journal are covering our efforts in the state, because we are going around to entities like yours. Last November, in San Diego County, America's fifth-largest county, voted on banning PLA. Seventy-six percent of the voters voted to ban PLAs. Seventy-six percent of people you would find, have a hard time finding, agree on what the weather's like today, but they voted to ban project labor agreements. That's now happened in nine entities throughout California. It's going to be on the ballot again in 2012 and numerous others. Please take seriously what you're being asked to consider. Do not fall for the guise of local hire being required as why PLA is required. It's not true. Thank you for your time. I will leave these packets with you and look forward to providing more information down the road on these very controversial, divisive agreements. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the information. I know the board did move forward to look at local hire provisions in a contract with the hospital, and I'm not sure that necessarily means PLA, and I appreciate the information. We'll look through it. Our next speaker is Arcelia Martinez on Oxnard College TV, I believe, and also Andrea Baltazar.
Good morning, everybody. I am here to talk about the Oxnard College program cuts. First of all, Ms. Miller left, but I wanted to thank her for fighting for something other than her selfish benefit and for taking a leap of faith with that child and not giving up just as well as she could have. I'm here to let you know that, just like her, I'm not giving up. I'm still fighting for the programs that, in the long run, will not benefit me. They will benefit future generations. And I want those generations to, just like me, also know that it's worth fighting for, and if you fight, things will happen. I want them to learn skills, just like I've learned skills attending Oxnard College, and I want them to also acquire lifelong friendships that, without Oxnard College, I would have never met any of these people, and they will be in my heart forever. And I know that you, as well as I know, those are hard to find. And giving future generations an opportunity to attend Oxnard College and one of those possible eight programs that will be cut would be devastating if they were not able to do that. And thank you so much for all of you taking the time to be here this morning, to do your job, and to allowing us to come in and letting you be aware of what's going on. And please spread the word. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Well spoken. Andrea Baltazar, followed by Juan Smith.
Morning. My name is Andrea Baltazar, and first off, I would just like to thank all the support that the supervisors I know have for education. I know that you all support education and are for education, and I want to thank especially Supervisor Zaragoza for your public comment and your letter at our forum, which we had a couple weeks ago at Oxnard College. I love Oxnard. It's a great city, and I'm from that city. And it was great to see everyone out there, not just from our school, but from the community, supporting our college. You know, these programs are lifelines. They provide access, they provide skills for jobs, and not just jobs, but to go on to higher education. And in my opinion, programs shouldn't be the first on the list to go. They should be the last resort. And especially for Oxnard College, these are programs that help so many people in our community. And I know that the board cannot create policy for our district, but you know, I'm here to ask for advocates for our community colleges, that programs stay there, and that people come out to the Board of Trustees meeting, which is next Tuesday, December 13th, at 6:30 in Ventura, for people to come out and talk about how important these programs are and that we need to keep them here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Juan Smith, followed by Juan Alcacer.
My name is Juan Smith. I'm a student at Oxnard College. We came to you a few months ago talking about our program and, you know, asking you for support and asking how you would help us try to save our programs. And since then, it's kind of been a long road. You know, as you can see, we haven't been as present as we should have been, but we haven't been doing nothing. We've been going to the on-campus meetings. We worked with the Associated Student Government at Oxnard College to put together the We Love Oxnard College Forum, and in it, we had representatives from the city. We had a representative from Dust Williams' office. We had just a representative from the district and just all over to let people know about what's going on with Oxnard. And one of the things that came out, and it's kind of been on my mind, is that Oxnard's the biggest city, and that a piece of it is in each of the trustees for the VCCD. Oxnard's in each of their districts. And we've been trying to meet with each of the trustees to tell them about our program, to tell them about our school, because it's more about the school, as you can see from the shirt. But I think that because it's so big that people are trying not to favor Oxnard, but in doing that, I feel they're neglecting it. And so just please help us, you know, talk to your counterparts of the district and ask them to do what they can to help our school. Thank you.
Thank you. And George Ortega, followed by Jonathan Portillo.
Hello, my name is George Ortega. I'm here representing Ventura County, Oxnard City, and Oxnard Community College. I just wanted to go through a list of the programs that are on a list being cut. Television and film program, the auto body program, the auto tech program, the business program, the music program, the accounting program, the computer informational systems program, and ceramics. These are all programs that pull kids from the community that normally might not have chosen to go to college. These are programs that interest students that, you know, that they might not have gone to college and bring them into the college to get higher education and to better their lives and to better our community. So these programs are very important to our college, to our community, to our future. And anything we can do to do it as community members, you know, it should be done. I also wanted to invite, you know, anybody who can come down or write emails to the Board of Trustees. The next meeting is going to be December 13th at 6:30 in Ventura. All these programs are being cut because of, supposedly of budget cuts, but the Ventura, the community college, the district, has $25 million in reserves that they're saving for a rainy day. While cutting these programs, to me, it seems like it's raining right now. While cutting these programs, to me, it seems like it's raining right now, and you know, we need that money. We need to save these programs as long as we can. I know it's tough times, but we have resources, and I believe it's time to use those resources for the benefit of the community and the benefit of the school. Thank you.
Jonathan? Jonathan? Oh, I'm sorry, George. Is that George? I would just say to you, you guys make some good comments here. If you could do a little investigation when they talk about cutting all these programs, go ask them how many administrators they're cutting. Go find out what they're doing. Zero. I agree with you. Hey, you know, the education system to me is to educate students and to provide this. I would say, go find out, because too many often in the education system, it's a political ploy to get people like you to come out and say you're cutting our programs, when the overhead is never cut. And I think that's where you have to go make your arguments, because at the end of the day, if education is truly educate students, we've got to keep people in front of students educating them, and we don't need all the bureaucracy and all the layers of overhead. And I think that's where you go find, because the idea, you're right, there's a lot of things that you just talked about, that a lot of students are not going to go into math, but they are going to go in and learn how to fix an engine, fix something, and it's what we need in this country. Too many places, we don't have people working with their hands and doing things. And so, I appreciate you guys coming here, and I'd say, go find out what you can do about that overhead, because that is what's killing the education system. Too much money there.
We do have one more speaker on this, so maybe we can...
After the speaker.
...let you speak. Jonathan Portillo.
Hello, and good morning. My name is Jonathan Portillo. I am also a student at Oxnard College, and I'd just like to say thank you to you, the board, for hearing us and for listening to what we have to say, and some of you for speaking on our behalf, and thank you to Supervisor Zaragoza for your letter at the We Love Oxnard College Forum. I mean, it was really great for the community and the people that were there to hear that, and it was a big event, and a lot of people did hear about what's happening and became I just want to say that we haven't stopped fighting, and thank you for your words and suggestions, and thank you for hearing us, and we thank you for everything.
Thank you. And Supervisor Zaragoza, and then Supervisor Long.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank the students from Oxnard College, Oxnard, save Oxnard College, I think it's important. My understanding is that we have something like forty percent dropouts in South Oxnard, and it was mentioned by the students that not all the youth go out there for an education and for higher education, for example, for being a doctor or an engineer, whatever, but they go for a trade school. Trade school, for example, to learn how to run a, operate a computer, how to fix it, as the supervisor mentioned, how to fix an engine, how to work with their hands and their brains and so forth. And I think it's important that we support Oxnard College. One of the things that I've heard from the students is that some of those programs are being kept in Moore Park, in Moore Park College, and to have the transportation from, or to have transportation to go from Oxnard to Moore Park is very, very difficult for some of those individuals. And I support Trustee Hernandez. He's really doing a good job for the community, trying to save a lot of those trade programs that we have at Oxnard College. And in fact, yesterday I met with one of the professors from Oxnard College and actually begging me to please save those programs. And we, of course, are not the policymakers for the trustees or the trustees for the three colleges, but definitely that letter that I submitted, you know, to the board the other day was extremely important, and I want to thank my staff. I was out of town at the time, but I really believe and try to save the programs in Oxnard because of the trade schools, and we need to reduce unemployment in South Oxnard by having those type of programs where they can learn to do a lot of this work that needs to be done in automobiles and computers and office work and so forth. I think it's extremely important. In fact, I was at the Oxnard Parade the other day, Madam Chair, and I was speaking to some of the youth that work with the drag program, I think the Oxnard PD has, on fixing automobiles and so forth, and they're very, very happy just to learn how to fix an engine and just work with the, in fact, most of those cars are computerized, and they're learning that too. So I really commend the Oxnard students for, continue those efforts and continue fighting for what you believe is right, and I'm right with you. Thank you.
Supervisor Long.
Just thank you for coming in, and I know there's been quite a movement of support on campus and actually throughout the system. It's unfortunate that our state has been unable to prioritize, honestly prioritize, education. Community colleges have been underfunded for years, and they are the true gateway to really develop and help students to find those paths of training and learning that aren't the ones that take you to the four-year college and should be focused on what opportunities are there. I think this board, you know, we're, I would not propose to take shots at the trustees, not having all the intricate understanding of their budget, just as I wouldn't want someone to come in here and, you know, necessarily tell us how to redirect our funds, but what in my conversations with the trustees, it is to look at, as Supervisor Foye mentioned, is there opportunity for restructuring, the way the administration is structured at the college district. You know, there are three presidents. There's a whole, you know, layers under those presidents at each campus, but again, that's not my decision. But for you to advocate, raise those questions, demand the information, you're doing a great job. Keep it up, and we'll certainly lend, I would certainly lend support where I can. So thank you.
And it is at a time when we need to be creating jobs, and one of that is by training people and training youth. This is just going backwards, and I know that there are entities out there like the Workforce Investment Board and others that put money into training, and hopefully something can get connected so we don't end up, you know, hurting our future and your future.
And Madam Chair, you know, I just want to add one more thing too. The professor that came over yesterday too, this is what he told me, and I believe him. Restructuring is so important, he says, up in the upper level. He says, "Even if I have to be restructured, I'll do so just to save our youth in Oxnard." So I just wanted to share that with you, so they're really looking out for the betterment of the community and the students. So I want to thank you again.
Thank you. And I believe that concludes our public comment portion of the agenda. We can now go to board comments and Supervisor Foye.
Thank you. I want to adjourn in memory of people on this list, just make a couple of comments. Hopefully everybody had a great Thanksgiving and got to enjoy their families some time. Also, I want to say congratulations to a Seamy High cross-country squad that won the CIF section championships, and to Sarah Baxter who won the girls' individual title for the Nike Challenge up in cross-country for the Nationals in Oregon. So she was out doing a great job. One of the other things too is that, as we probably all saw, the governors put two proposals or trying to put two proposals on the ballot, you know, for more tax increases, and going back to what we just heard today, instead of trying to find priorities and do the things right, we've had nine tax proposals over the last few years, and every one of them's failed. Instead of trying to come up with real solutions, we've got to get legislature, governor, everybody together to work on this issue. People aren't going to vote for more taxes, this is not going to happen. We've got to stop delaying the issues and really go after it and make some things, you know, work, work through this issue and structure. It's interesting, even during the recession, when Schwarzenegger was in, we hired, what, fifty thousand people? I haven't seen one of those people leave yet. I mean, even to a Republican governor, we saw major mistakes, you know? The rest of the world, county governments, cities, had to lay people off, do stuff. We haven't seen the state do some of the things, and now we see the struggles that are going on, and to me, it's just crazy that we just keep going down this path. Anyway, those are my frustrating comments, so.
Supervisor Long.
Yes, thank you. Did you, okay. Yes, thank you, and as we, I'll start out first with the adjournment memory. Unfortunately, my list is longer than anyone would like, but to call out a couple in Santa Paula, Bertha May Romano, who is a nurse of our own VCNT in Santa Paula Hospital, passed away. Gilbert C. Navarro, again, Santa Paula, teacher and coach at Isabel Middle School, Santa Paula High School, and St. Bonny's, known and loved by many, many in the community. And then Robie G. Anderson of Camarillo, who was an elementary school teacher, and Robie lived to be a hundred and four years old, which is pretty amazing, yeah. And then a true icon in Camarillo, Geraldine Chapman Fitzgerald. She was the granddaughter of Donia Isabel and Don Adolfo Camarillo, the founder of Camarillo. Oxnard High School civics teacher, Adolfo Camarillo High School counselor, Ventura County grand jury member, awarded the honor of Donia by the Pleasant Valley Historical Society. Always such an interesting woman to sit down and chat with and hear her life history of growing up on the ranch and her family and her grandparents. It was a remarkable woman. Also for, back to Santa Paula, unfortunately, Marjorie Helen Kelly, the mother of Peggy Kelly, who is known and loved in Santa Paula. Her mother passed away. Her mother was a pilot, an artist, a volunteer, and just a beautiful woman. And then, I don't normally call all these out, but these folks I've known over the years, and Peter Bokron. Peter, Pete as he was known, lived in Camarillo, very, very active with Saint Demetrius Greek Orthodox Church, was really behind the movement to set up a card club and to continue to support the church and the Greek festival. He was always at the front table greeting people, foreman of the grand jury, just a really, really good, good, good Greek man and supporter of the community. So I'll submit that list, and thank you for that additional time there. This morning at our RDP twenty-one meeting, just a couple of things I wanted to call out, since we, tomorrow is December seventh, but as always, we are very supportive of our veterans in this county and our naval base Ventura County. At our veterans home up here on the corner. Thank you, Wells, yeah, up there. The veterans home, they have a career closet. It's the veterans' career closet. It's at the veterans' home, and it's for service folks coming out, transitioning out of the service into the community, into professional careers, into jobs, and their need for professional clothes. So if you have men's and women's suits, professional clothes, you can take them to the veterans' home, and they will make them available to veterans transitioning out of the service. So you know that, I just, I wanted to mention that. And then, next week, I will provide the board a little broader update on the CSAC Conference, the annual conference that I participated in last week. A couple of things I'll mention, and I know Supervisor Zaragoza and Mr. Powers also want to touch on a couple of things. One, I thought was a very good conference. The highlight for us in Ventura County, we were called out a couple of times, is our very own CEO, Mike Powers, and Norma Camacho of Watership Protection District, won the five-k CSAC fund run. They won it. Came in first.
Wow.
Yeah, came in first. At the conference, we had lots of focus, as you can expect, workshops, pension reform, the whole realignment under one oh nine, a couple of different panels of counties who have kicked into high gear with the transition on realignment ideas, best practices coming out, information being gathered that will be passed down to all of the CSAC counties on how things are progressing. Again, what are those best practices and how it is important? And one thing quickly was the, as I always learn from these things, we are always in good position, sometimes ahead of the curve on these areas of reform and integrating services. In the one oh nine panelists and discussions that we have, both probation as our chair of this realignment, but also have behavioral health at the table and human services at the table, and the integration of the programs and services and outreach to the community to build capacity to handle this transition of folks who are coming back to us, was very, was just time and time and time again, said that is the best way for us to go, that we cannot do the silo operations, we cannot expect to change recidivism and change the challenges we're going to face if we don't do things a little differently. Focuses, a couple that came out were concerns with increase in domestic violence, with return of these folks who may or may not be welcomed by their families, and more importantly, to look at that family focus ahead of time, before they even return to the community. Are they connected with their family? What can we do to help them to feel like they're supported in the family, stronger in receiving that inmate back into their home and their community? So there's much more to those brief comments, but I know that we had a good team up there participating. Mr. Zimmerman was there, and of course, Mike was there. So lots of information shared, and next week I'll bring back more on perhaps the broader policy questions on initiatives. And we, the Board of Directors at CSAC asked the staff to provide, once the governor files whatever he's going to file. He did come and speak to us briefly, but no details at all as to exactly what he's looking. Now, we've seen some of the details in the press, but a side-by-side comparison of what CSAC is proposing, possibly an initiative that would just frankly, through a constitutional amendment, just lock down current revenues with some growth expectations and basically protecting counties from being ripped off again versus the governor's proposal for new revenues. Anyway, so that will come back. Next week, we'll have, I hope to provide the board more information on that for our review. And let me make sure I've covered everything here. I think you all have probably seen that the judge ruled in favor of the first five commission that the governor had no legal standing in taking the billion dollars from the trust fund on first five, which, you know, for public policy, I would say that's a good thing, but for the consequences behind that, it obviously means he has to go someplace else to find the cuts that are needed, so it'll add to that trigger list of cuts that are going to occur. So as the community colleges are facing thirty million dollars, we know at the local level we have future realignment impacts that are going to come our way. So that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to adjourn in memory of the folks on this list, and I'd like to call out one individual, Bruce Forside. Bruce Forside and Rosemary Forside own Forside Realty in Oxnard for years and years and years, and I had the opportunity to pick up my broker's license, and they were my sponsors, you know, many, many, many years ago. I won't even share what year it was, but I was a broker and became a broker. In fact, I got my broker's license because I didn't waive the two-year experience because I had a college degree, and they helped me tremendously. In fact, Bruce and I were partners in a tax, we called it John and Bruce Tax Service. So he was also a firefighter for, a retired firefighter for the county of LA and county of Ventura. So he passed away the other day, and I'd just like to share that, that he was, Bruce and Rosemary was a good friend of mine. In fact, if you remember, Rosemary was the first one that won the, remember when the Big Spin came out? The million dollars? Well, she's the one that won the first million, and of course, you know, we got a sandwich out of it, but it was good. But also, you know, in addition to that, I'd like to adjourn in memory of those folks. I did attend also the CSAC conference in San Francisco, and Supervisor Long highlighted that very well, you know, we, there was pension, pension reform, redistricting was another subject, how the concerns that quite a few counties are having, and I just want to commend our Board of Supervisors for the excellent work that we did here and the partnership that we had here in Ventura County and how well we did in redistricting, and I've talked to quite a few supervisors there, and that they were sharing with me the problems they had, so I'd just like to commend our board for doing an excellent job on that. And the realignment, again, you know, was a big issue, the one oh nine, and the important thing that I think that we're the vanguards here is that we have the CCP, the partnership with all the agencies, Ventura County, sure, is the... the CCP, the partnership with all the agencies, Ventura County, sure, all the police departments for the city of Oxnard, and probation, working together in behavioral health and human services. So I believe that really our staff should be commended because of what I heard out there in CSAC. Our staff are top-notch staff, we're way ahead of the curve, and we're doing excellent work here for Ventura County. It was very rewarding. And again, also, as was mentioned, I'd like to commend our CEO for winning the 5K, and also Norma Camacho, and the female went to it. And it was announced in every single subject and conference that we went to, so I just want to commend them for a good run. And it was called to. One of the things too, and Supervisor Long, and I think I left, probably before that, but I think Rosecall mentioned something about having a Pearl Harbor ceremony here tomorrow.
Yes.
You know, at 10 to 12 tomorrow here at the center. So, and again, you know, I'm very happy too about first five being a member of first five. You know, first five supports our kids from zero to five years of age, and having those $20 million is really going to help us tremendously because we needed to adjust our budgets accordingly. So, and that's all I have, and it was a good, good conference in San Francisco. And again, I want to commend our staff for doing a great job. What I heard out there in San Francisco, what they're doing and what we're doing, I think we're the vanguards, I think we're way ahead of the pension reform and redistricting and reenlightenment and the partnerships that we form here in Ventura County. So thank you.
And our staff are in better shape.
In better shape. They won the race.
They won the race. All right. Thank you, Supervisors. Just a couple of brief comments. First, I'd like to go ahead and close in honor of the people on this list and call out a couple of individuals. Marilyn Davis, who passed away. Her husband Charlie had died, I think, about a year ago. And just a wonderful couple. They were in the entertainment business, and even though they were older, they always liked to go and entertain at the senior centers with their song and dance routine, and just a wonderful couple. Also, a wonderful lady named Julie Barker died in our district. I know she's going to be very much missed, and a very sweet woman who had a courageous battle against cancer. And then just a tragic death of a young woman, Stacy Wade. Stacy was the daughter of Tom Wade, who we dedicated a tree to in Santa Rosa Park. And Stacy was murdered, and it was just shocking and devastating to the family, and the community is all coming out to help the family any way that they can, so that was very unfortunate. Also, the Community Action of Ventura County has posthumously awarded Marie Panic with their Hero Award, which I thought was very fitting. Marie was very integral to the Oak Park community, a member of the school district there and also working at Moore Park College. And a wonderful lady also worked with the Community Action of Ventura and just noted that she was a very positive person with a brilliant mind, a courageous heart, very much missed, so it was nice that they honored her with that. Also, I have quarterly dinners that I do, and this one on December 6th tomorrow, or December 7th tomorrow evening, is featuring Ed Lawrence and his photos of the Caneo Valley. He's documented the landscape of the Caneo Valley through its growth, as well as Larry Janz, who will be talking about growing up in the Caneo Valley and showing some photos that he has. And then also Jeffrey Mulheart, who has done photo documentaries and just put out a book on Jungleland about Thousand Oaks. So that's at Cafe Provençal, and we sold out like immediately, so we opened up a new date, which is Friday the 16th, I believe it is. So people can still come to that and just contact me or my office for that. And then just a couple interesting facts and history because we're here. December 6th is Saint Nicholas Day. That's today. Jolly Santa Claus evolved from Saint Nicholas, a fourth-century bishop of the city of Myra in what is now Turkey, renowned for his great kindness and generous aid to those in distress. Traditional celebration of Saint Nicholas Day included gifts left in children's shoes, the origin of our American Christmas stockings. Good children receive treats, candies, cookies, apples and nuts. Naughty children receive switches and lumps of coal. With that then, we'll go ahead, yes? Yes, Mr. Powers?
Following on with the lumps of coal there. Just a couple of, it's all right on the CSAC Conference, just to round out a couple of things. So much of it's been covered, but just to add a couple of points. There is an awful lot going on that's affecting local governments. You've mentioned the pension issues, realignment, safety realignment, but also health reform. These are tectonic shifts in what's happening in local governments, and challenges to be sure, but opportunities as well. And a couple of points that were raised, especially in the health reform areas. One, federal health reform is not self-implementing. It's not just going to happen. So the state and each county really needs to decide how they're going to implement it here. And as your Board has been supporting and approving projects, we are going in a good direction. And they also highlighted, in fact, Blue Shield did in particular, that health reform can benefit systems that are fully integrated with community clinics and clinic systems like the ones that we have here. So I think that's, it's a lot of work, but real potential, good opportunities there. In terms of other counties, we heard, you know, some good comparisons, but you know, one thing that we do hear when we're up there is just the struggling financially and the tremendous deficits, tens of millions of dollars in deficits. And, you know, we got our challenges here to be sure, and it's a daily struggle, but it's interesting to hear how these other counties, those big deficits are facing, and with your Board and our management team, it's really keeping us in good, good shape here. You really notice that when you're with the other counties up there. LAO's Office did a little report, just to quickly summarize it. They were trying to show highlights, and they said, well, one piece of good news is that we used to be $26 billion in the hole in the state, but now it's $13 billion. You know, times are tough when it's good news that it's only $13 billion cut. They did also point out that in terms of revenues, property taxes do look like they're going to continue to be flat to weigh 1% or 2%. Little bit of glimmer of positive news on the sales tax, which will help us with 172. But overall, as you've all said, I think our county is hanging in there pretty well on pensions. They did highlight some changes that other counties are making and some good and interesting ideas there, but also noticed that some of the things they're doing are things that have already been done here in our county. In terms of, you know, one example is adopting our pension formula, percentage formula. That's what they're going to do to address costs, and some things have already been done here. So with that, I'd just say, you know, we are hanging in there pretty well, all things considered. And I also want to just make a quick note that, on the race, that our own Jeff Berg from the CEO's office came in second, so we had a good showing there. Make sure I keep the record complete.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Let me share one more thing, you know. One of the things too, that when the governor was speaking, and he saw in the new Board for CSAC, and one of the things that he did, he would walk by us, and he stopped at the Ventura table, shook hands with the governor.
He was going to tackle them.
And my wife gave him a big old hug, and he says, this is nonpartisan, okay? Gave him a big old hug, and he says, oh, hey, what a lovely lady. Let me give you a big hug. But anyway, we, he stopped at the Ventura County table and said hello to all of us, you know. Quite a governor. And so, but anyway, I just wanted to share that we shook hands with him, and he was there.
I know I had the opportunity to meet Governor Schwarzenegger so many times because we kept having disasters and landslides and fires, and every time I saw him, I thought about that, you know, because it was always a disaster. But fortunately, haven't had the opportunity in such circumstances to meet the current governor.
Anyway, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. With that then, and thank you also, Mr. Powers, for your comments. Ventura County is very well situated. Not all counties have hospitals and clinic systems. We do, and that puts us in a better situation for implementing new healthcare. At this point then, we can go to our regular agenda item? Good. We'll go to item 33. This is regarding Water District Number 19 that encompasses the Las Poses Valley. And not seeing a staff member jumping up immediately, I could go.
Sorry, which show?
Am I, am I?
Go to 31.
I could go to item 31. And this is regarding a ratification of our Public Health Director to apply for Community Transformation Grants, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Good morning, Madam Parks, Chair Parks, members of the Board, Mr. Powers. Rigoberto Vargas, I'm Division Manager for Public Health, and I am here as Supervisor Parks mentioned, to ask for your approval of, first ratification of, and then also approval to accept a fairly large grant award from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention that would really put us in the map with regard to prevention of chronic diseases. We are also asking that your Board approve the establishment of three fixed-term positions that would help us to implement this grant. It is a one-year grant based on a five-year period, so if we make good progress on this planning, capacity building grant, we stand to get additional resources for Ventura County to, again, better address chronic diseases in a prevention approach. So I'm here for, asking for your approval and take any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Powers, you had a comment?
These are very competitive grants, and it's a real validation of the work that Public Health is doing that they received this grant, so congratulations.
And I also support the fixed-term position. I think that's the right way to go on something when you have a limited timeframe for your source of funds. So without, yes, Supervisor Zaragoza?
continues to do good work, you know, not only in this venue, but also in gardening and other efforts that you, I just wanted to say, I was out there in Columbia with him, and he, that gardenage is beautiful. I know it's not part of this, but I just wanted to share that publicly. Thanks for your good work.
Good team in Public Health and the healthcare industry. Does good community work.
And the issue that it's a ratification, there was a, you just didn't have enough time to get it to the Board?
Yes, it was a very large, comprehensive grant to prepare for with, including aligning potential subcontractors and the turnaround for coming to your Board to ask for approval to apply in the first place was a very short, and so that's the reason for the ratification.
Okay. All right, we do have a motion, do we not? Good. And a second. Supervisor Long made the motion, Supervisor Foy the second, and we could please vote. And I believe that's a 4-0. And now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 35, this is some really positive news from our Public Works Agency. This would be headline news, I think, if it were.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the Board, Mr. Powers. My name is Phil Nelson, I'm with the Public Works Agency. Item 35 is a request for your Board approval for the Caneo Clinic at Thousand Oaks. It's the renovation of 41,000 square foot multi-use facility in Thousand Oaks for use by the healthcare agency. Bids were opened on November the 17th with Pereira Construction and Design, having submitted the lowest responsible bid of $4,869,001. We're asking, recommending to your Board would approve the plans and specs, along with adindums numbers one and two. Waive any minor bid irregularities. Award the contract to Pereira, as I mentioned earlier. Authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the subject project and find if the project is exempt under SEQA. I'm happy to take any questions.
And how much underbid is this? It was a $6 million estimate, $4 million that came in?
The government estimate was 6.3 million, so we were 23% below our estimate.
See, that's, if it were 23% over, that would be the headline now. 23% under, that is exceedingly great.
It was great. All our bids were very close and tight, and they were all under our estimate, so.
That's wonderful. Supervisor Foy? Oh, I definitely want to make a motion. I think that's great. I'm glad that.
Excellent work.
Yeah, if I might. I certainly appreciate the work and that we did get such a good bid. It is a master contract in an out-of-county company, but that's their expertise. And, you know, I know that the message has been heard loud and clear that we do our very best to encourage those companies to hire locals, so, and to certainly abide by both prevailing wage and apprenticeship opportunities. So I know we do a good job watching them.
We will, very much, and I appreciate the thanks. I have the lucky job of getting to come up and present the good news, but it really is a lot of folks working very hard on the healthcare staff, CEO staff, public works staff that made all this happen, so thank you very much.
Yes, we have one question. Supervisor Zaragoza?
I just wanted to share, you know, that 23% below, is that the sign of the times because of the current economy or?
That's one factor. We're finding our bids are coming in lower. We had also factored in some extra money because we know we have a compressed schedule, so we thought contractors may have to do some extraordinary things to meet that schedule, and we factored that in. As it turns out in the bids, that apparently was not the case. They feel confident that they can complete the project on time.
And this we'll share too, and I think that's going to help our local hire, you know.
Absolutely.
That's good.
Thank you. And Supervisor Foy, and then Supervisor Long?
Let me just ask, every time you get a bid on these different projects, you start to readjust your bids based on where they're coming in? So you don't say that our engineer's estimate was this, what we did five years ago, they slowly start to change?
We use current costing data.
Current cost, yeah, so I mean, so as they come down, you start to?
We do make adjustments to come down, but we don't try to be overly optimistic. You know, it's always, there are a lot of businesses, decisions that get made in submitting bids. It's hard to guess where each contractor is on their business decisions. But we do look at the costs of material, the costs of labor. Those are the same regardless. There's overheads that factor in depending on how different contractors manage their projects. And then just the experience that we're having with bids, you know, if they're typically coming in lower, we might add a factor in to bring them down a bit.
Right, I just, because some people have said to me, well, of course, they're going to be lower than where they were before, but I think you guys start to adjust yours based on where the competition is.
That's correct.
And a lot of people are cutting their margins to do work.
That's correct.
So we can take, you know, the taxpayer gets the advantage of this right now.
That's correct.
Just one quick question on the contingency, $300,000. I guess I thought it's always been about 10% of the cost of the overall project. This is a little lower than that.
We did, this is a narrower contingency. Typically, sometimes we have had a larger contingency, but we felt comfortable with the nature of the work and what needed to be done with that amount.
Okay, and if it goes over that, it would come back to the Board?
That's correct. Whatever the.
It's expended.
Correct. You know, with the current Board policies, if need be, we'll be back to explain why.
Okay.
And make sure you're comfortable with that.
He's going to be squeezing people, he won't come back.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is nice to see that we have, because of the economy, we're seeing lower bids, but also how needed the jobs are too, so it's definitely a win-win for the taxpayers and also for the economy there.
We had seven, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We had 17 bids, so it's, you know, there are a lot of hungry contractors out there still, so.
Great. Okay, we do have a motion on this, and a second from Supervisor Foy, if we could please vote. All right, and that passes 4-0. And we have about four minutes before our 9:45, or three minutes? Break! Let's have a quick break and come back for our item 32, if I'm correct, is at 9:45. Good. We're coming back to our December sixth, two thousand and eleven meeting, and we have our nine forty-five time certain that will come to, and this is item number thirty-two. And Ms. Christie is going to be taking this for us, Mrs. Madden.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Christie Madden with the County Executive Office. I'm pleased to come before you today to fulfill one of the three recommendations that your board made on April sixth of last year when you allocated three point one million dollars to implement some recommendations in the ten-year strategy to end homelessness. Today's item establishes the revenue and appropriations to provide a half a million dollars in partial match to the Ventura County Housing Trust Fund's application to the Department of Housing and Community Development for Housing Trust Fund dollars. As indicated on page two of your staff report, the Ventura County Housing Trust Fund has managed to raise over a million dollars in local funds to provide match for their application. I will assert that this success can be attributed, at least in part, to your board's leadership and foresight as being an early contributor to the fund. Preparing for this application has been a long and arduous effort for the Housing Trust Fund. The members of their board, many of whom are here today, are to be commended for their tenacity and dedication as they maneuvered the apparent fluidity of the program requirements at HCD. That's maybe a little gentle way of saying it's been compli, fluid, I don't know, maybe I just made that up. Yeah, it has been a tough, a tough road to hoe, and it's been several years in the making, and there were times when some of the people were ready to throw in the towels, so the fact that we've gotten to this point today is really pretty monumental. After much of this effort, the board is convinced that with the approval of this funding, their application will be ready for submission to HCD. They may wait until early to mid-January to get their application in, they're waiting to hear about a few more dollars coming in, and of course, they can apply for up to two million dollars. So the more match money that they have available, the more money that they can apply for, and they don't want to leave any money unapplied for if they can get their hands on it. We have several members of the Ventura County Housing Trust Fund Board here in the audience today. I'd like to introduce them. We have Don Dyer, who has been the spearhead of this whole effort. We have Stacy Swanson from Habitat for Humanity, and we have Fred Farrell, and the Executive Director for the Housing Trust Fund is Linda Bronschweiger. With today's action, the county will transfer the half a million dollars to the Housing Trust Fund once they have demonstrated and executed contract with HCD. So once they get their successful application for proppancy money, we will transfer the money and deposit it into the fund. If you have any questions about this item, I can speak to the county's end of it. The members of the Housing Trust Fund Board can answer any technical questions you might have about the operations of the fund and how they'll make their funding priorities. That does conclude my presentation. If you have any questions.
Do we have any questions? I do have some cards, too. Should we go ahead and go to our cards? Don, Don Dyer, followed by Stacy Swanson.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I'm Don Dyer. I am the Chair of the Ventura County Housing Trust Fund, and I personally want to thank our dedicated group of volunteers who have served on this board to bring this item to fruition in such a challenging climate. Also, really appreciate Supervisor Long and Supervisor Bennett in Extenja for bringing this item before the Board of Supervisors a little over a year ago, and your action, as Christie mentioned, was very much a critical piece in enabling us to go back out to the cities in Ventura County and enroll them into participating, many of them into participating in this program, as well as generating additional dollars through the private sector, the banking sector, and philanthropic dollars. So we're really excited about moving forward. I'd also very much like to thank Christie Madden and Mr. Powers and the executive staff here. They have been extremely helpful, both in bringing this item before the board, but also in helping us to understand and dialogue with the state and HCD on some very specific issues. I'm really excited that the Ventura Housing Trust Fund is ready to launch with the appropriation of these dollars and our successful application to HCD. We expect to be in a position to issue our first notice of funding availability to the community in early 2012 and to begin helping to fund the creation of much-needed housing, and also to help create jobs in the construction industry here in Ventura County, which are sorely needed at this time. I'm also very personally pleased and take great pride that our group has decided to prioritize housing for persons who are currently homeless and really struggling to make ends meet in this difficult economy, for veterans who have served our country proudly and bravely, and now we can stand up and help make sure that they have a safe place to live, and also for transitional youth, which really have a soft spot in my heart. So thank you again for supporting this motion. I'm here if you have any questions regarding our fund itself, and also would really like to thank Linda Bronschweiger, our CEO. She's just been incredibly helpful in moving through this process. Thank you all.
Thank you. And Supervisor Long?
Just a quick question, Don. The first funding to be let in 2012.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, yes.
I'm thinking 2012's a long way away. No, it's next year. It's a long.
It's next year, yeah. We're really hoping within the first half of 2012 to have our first no-fail. Yep, great.
And Madam Chair, thank you again for a good work, and the staff too, you know, for an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also like the fact that the cities are stepping up to the plate, too, some of the cities, and we need to encourage all of the cities to put in there for sure. Thank you.
Is that Thousand Oaks?
Yes, Thousand Oaks. Congratulations, they've stepped up to the plate. And Stacy Swanson?
Good morning. I'm Stacy Swanson. I am a member of the Board of Directors for the Housing Trust Fund. I'm also the Executive Director at Habitat for Humanity of Ventura County, and I'm just here, short and sweet, to echo my thanks as a board member. It's been a very exciting process to be a part of over the last several years to watch the Housing Trust Fund unfold into what we have before you today. I want to echo what Linda just said about this unique opportunity for a countywide effort to look at affordable housing as a countywide issue and not just in each individual city within the county and who has a greater need than others. Every city in this county has a need for affordable housing, and every affordable housing provider is looking for creative ways to fund affordable housing projects. And so it's wonderful to be a part of, it's wonderful to see your leadership taking the first step by putting, making that commitment so that then we could approach other cities and say, let's work together on this. This is something different we can do. It's a way to help get these projects that have been in the works for so long off the ground and built. So thank you so much for your consideration for the allocation so that we can get more dollars put to work to create housing for the communities in Ventura County.
And for the record, the City of Ventura has put in two hundred thousand plus their housing authority another twenty thousand, and then also the cities of Santa Palomore Park and Thousand Oaks, each fifty thousand. That's nice to see, and Camarillo, a whopping hundred thousand, so that's great to see. At this time, if the board has no questions, I'll turn it over to Supervisor Long.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, all of you. Words of monumental tenacity, perseverance. Words of monumental tenacity, perseverance, volunteers, leadership. It's just been great, great work, heartfelt, focused, and committed to the mission. Kristi, you've done an outstanding job working with the volunteers, too, and, and, and the board, the Housing Trust Fund Board that was formed to do this, to be able to go to those cities and extract, extract, get them to see the vision and understand that the mission and, frankly, the, the goal of being able to capture 1C funds and, and bring them to our county, and to be able to incentivize the homeless need or the housing needs, as you've identified now with priorities also, is just, it is monumental work. Excellent work. I'm very pleased and proud to have been a part of it. I think with the board stepping forward to put those dollars out there as a challenge helped tremendously. I'm pleased to see private sector and banks already stepping up and, and know that as this rolls out, some of them, we see some on-the-ground success, they'll, they'll continue to be successful. So I, there's just, your trips to Sacramento and Linda and Don and, and, and the passion of the board to continue this has just been well worth every minute, every bit of your time. HCD, the little language things we've had to struggle with to really understand, what is it that they're going to, you know, be accepting to in the grant? I'm very, very excited and very appreciative of your work and the passion for it. So I was pleased to make the motion to approve the recommended action.
Great, we have a motion, second from Supervisor Zaragosa, some encouragement to the cities of Fillmore, Port Juine, Eme, Seamy Valley, and Oxnard to join in. And this, it also says something for the collaboration. I, I can't remember when all the cities have stepped in like that, so. Good cheer for the holidays, good cause.
Absolutely.
And that is approved on a 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good work. Well, it's been a long time coming. Lots of work there.
All right, so our next item on the agenda, according to my little cheat sheet, is item 21. And this is a 10:00 AM time certain item. And this is the master plan for our transportation improvements, our, and our criteria. Mr. Fleisch?
Good morning, Chair Parks Supervisors. Mr. Powers, for the record, I'm Dave Fleisch, the Public Works Agency Transportation Department Director. And before I begin this morning, I've provided you an updated final master plan. Essentially, the primary change in this plan is a revised appendix B, the project list. And, and the main change to it is it was, particularly the top projects were secondarily sorted, and I'll explain that a little bit later on in the brief. I, I also have provided a hard copy of the PowerPoint presentation that I emailed everyone earlier, last week, actually.
Question, before we get really underway here. On the recommended actions, 1 through 4, are we going to be asked to approve the list of projects?
No, ma'am. In fact, I have, my second slide here is going to adjust those recommended actions.
Thank you.
So going back just real briefly, these are the items that I'll cover today. But before I start, and again, I'll return to this slide at, at the end of the brief, but I wanted to address the recommended actions. After further consideration, recommendations 3 and 4 in the original board letter have been removed, and we're only requesting that your board provide staff direction on the prioritization criteria and the project priority list. With that information, we'll come back to you in May. Today, there are approximately 2,590 centerline miles of roads in the geographic county. Of those, about 1,800 of those belong to the cities, about 270 to Caltrans, and 544 in the county road network. In 1947, when the Collier-Burns Highway Act was passed, which essentially created our county road network and the county road department, the state records indicated that we had a certified maintained mileage of 542.9 miles. The county petitioned this being incorrect. And after some adjustment and review, the county, or the state updated that, and our initial increased mileage at the beginning of that act was 612 miles. In 1964, that mileage was as an all, was at an all-time high at about 817 miles. Since then, many roads have been annexed into neighboring, neighboring cities or cities incorporated. For example, Thousand Oaks and Camarillo in 1964, Seamy in 1969, and Moore Park in 1983. And additionally, some, some new roads have been added into the network. Today, our mileage is 544.15. We're required annually to certify that with the state, and that's the marker that indicates a lot of how we get some of our funding. That mileage, by the way, has been consistent since the mid-'80s at about 550, plus or minus a mile here and there. So we've stayed fairly consistent and don't expect that to change significantly anytime in the future. Since the, since the Collier-Burns Act was passed, there's been a lot of improvements done to roads here in the county. What you see up here is a picture of Center, Central Avenue and South Mountain Road Bridge as they looked a number of years ago. And then this shows the improvements as they are today. So we haven't just been maintaining, we have actually been improving. And part of the focus of this brief is that, how to move forward, forward with that process. Just very briefly about the Transportation Department organization. I have five sections within the department. Two-thirds of the staff is in the road maintenance or operations and maintenance group. And you'll see those, there are five districts, and I apologize for that name, it's a little bit confusing. It's not the five supervisory districts, but it's been a name and a term that's been used for quite some time in the department. Two of those are functional, and that's what you see is districts 3 and 4, and they essentially handle the striping and signage, major, or construction projects other than pavement, and then the tree trimming and vegetation control throughout the entire county. The other three are geographic districts. District 1, Moore Park, which covers the eastern portion of the county. Saticoy, District 2, which covers the western portion of the county, and then District 5, which is a small group that we have up in Lockwood Valley. Oh, I'm sorry, let me back up for just a second. And in addition to those, the Design and Construction Division executes all of our construction and, and projects, including the design, with the exception of bridge design. I don't have a structural engineer on the staff, and that's what it takes to do bridge design. So we contract for those, but predominantly everything else we handle. The Advanced Planning, they're responsible for discretionary permit rees, working with resource management agency, pavement management, project generation, our overall capital improvement program, which I'll talk about a little bit later, and short and long-range planning, such as the strategic master plan we're going to be discussing today. The Permit Section administers the transportation and encroachment permit programs, which equates to over 1,100 permits a year that we, we issue. And finally, the Traffic Section does accident and collision analysis, traffic control device management, and speed surveys and analysis. In the last 20 years, if you look at this slide, you'll see we've reduced 38 positions, or about a quarter of the staff in the Transportation Department. Currently, today, I have 113 positions that are, that are authorized within the department. We have 105 of those filled. And of those eight that are vacant, we don't anticipate, I think we'll fill two of those, but the remaining six will likely remain vacant. And we're continuing to look at, at our staff to see if those are permanent reductions that we can make and as we go down the path. A quick look at the budget, history of the, of the department. In the last 11 years, as you can see by this slide, we've had a total of $331 million, approximately $30 million of revenue a year. We get that through multiple sources, as you see on the slide there. And as you can see, with the exception of the orange bar, which is the highway user tax account or the state gas tax, it's predomin, that's predominantly consistent. The rest of them fluctuate fairly greatly. The federal includes FEMA funds that we've gotten for disaster. It includes the various different programs that are involved in, in the high, with the Federal Highway Act, and, and any other potential grants that we might get from the federal government. The other block that you see there is predominantly any residual Transportation Development Act funding that we've gotten previously, propositions, any sorts of other fees that we get. A note, you'll see in 2010, the $22 million in federal funding. That was primarily due to three things. About $10 million of that was for the Lewis Road Bridge, the state segment of that, where we got federal funding. The roughly $5 million of stimulus funding we got for paving projects, and about $3 million of bridge funding. So that's what brings that up much higher than you would normally see. Those were one-time funds and not something that we would expect to see on a routine From an expenditure perspective, over the last 11 years, as you can see here, we've expended about $287 million. Eighty percent of those expenditures come in three primary categories. Operations and maintenance, which is the kind of pink-colored box you see up there. Payment rehabilitation, which is the purple, and the green, which is other major improvement projects. Operations and maintenance is exactly what it is. That's, that's filling the potholes, keeping the shoulders clean, doing the striping, the basic things that the, the staff does to keep the roads operating in a normal, normal manner. The payment rehabilitation, there's a lot of one-time funding. About half of what you see in the last 10 years was one-time funding we got either through Prop 1A or 1B funding, or the ARA funding that we got. And so, other than the highway user tax account funding that we get, we rely upon these one-time infusions of different types of funds in order to, to deal with paving. Paving's a good news story, and I'm going to talk about that in just a minute here. You note, though, on the other major improvements, you see $66 million over the last 11 years. $50 million of that was Lewis Road. So $50 million of that was the, all of the phases of Lewis Road. So really, if you take that project out, the other major improvement projects that we've had, you get around $2 to $2.5 million a year for us to do other than pavement-type projects. Therein lies some of the issue and why we're here talking today. For 2012, 11-12, you can see our budget here. From a revenue perspective, roughly 25, or $23.5 million. And predominantly, three-quarters of that are our state tax, gas tax. We are very fortunate in this county in that our population and our vehicle registrations are comparable to our road network so that we can maintain the roads primarily with that highway user tax. Many of the other counties are not so lucky. For example, Sonoma County has three times the roads and one-third the population, hence they have some huge problems with just doing maintenance. So we're very fortunate in terms of the money and the requirements for basic maintenance match fairly closely. They need to stomp asphalt instead of grapes, I guess. So for our expenditures for this fiscal year, as you see there, predominantly operations and maintenance, pavement rehabilitation, and then the other improvement projects. And those other improvement projects are things that we've had some commitments in, in order to do. But again, a relatively small amount, about $4 million of, of that budget. From a good news perspective, I want to talk a little bit about our pavement maintenance before I get into the strategic plan. The latest pavement plan that we're operating on was approved by your board on October 20 of 2009. In 2010 and 11, we resurfaced 60 centerline miles of roads for a total of about $18 million. And that was, again, funded by a lot of some local road fund, but predominantly Prop 1B and ARA funding, and some other federal funding that we got. We expect to have that full plan, which your board approved, completed within about the next year to 15 months. So obviously, from that, we need to develop a new plan, which we're, we're underway on right now. And I expect to be able to bring that plan to your board in probably the March timeframe for your approval. What I'm choosing to do with this is, instead of do a two-year plan that we did previously, is to do a little longer look, a five-year plan, that will help us look a little bit broader across the county and make sure that we're, we're focusing on the right things. The good news story, in 2009, before we started the current paving that we're on, our payment condition index, which I've talked with you about previously, was 61. We, as of today, it's 65, and we expect at the end of completing the, the plan in March of 2013, it'll be 67. So we're actually moving forward with, with our payment condition. Now, below 70 is still at risk, so although we're moving forward, we still have a lot of work to do, but we're, we're making progress, which is, is a very positive thing. Now, moving on to the actual main focus of the brief, and that's the capital improvement program for the Transportation Department. A couple of slides ago, I addressed the major categories of work that we had in our budget slide. For four of those that's shown up here, we have established programs that we use in order to prioritize our work. Operations and maintenance, we have a long, a scheduling process that we use for, for the maintenance work that we do. Storm repairs, obviously, when we have a storm, we go out and figure out where the worst, worst problems are and fix those first. Bridge repairs, we get a lot of help from Caltrans in terms of them telling us which bridges we need to work on. And then the pavement rehabilitation, again, I just mentioned, we have an ongoing pavement plan. For the remainder of the work that we have, we really don't have a prioritization project process in place, other than coming to your board every time we find money and saying, "We've got this list of projects. Do you think these are the ones that we should do?" So the thought was that we needed to take a longer-range look at that. We do come annually with our capital improvement plan and program for you, but wanted to have a little more integrated approach to that with previous guidance that we've received from your board or other, or, or VCTC. So with that in mind, my advanced planning staff, specifically Ben Amami and Howard DeLeon, who are sitting right here behind me, who are really the guys who've done all of the work on this, I'm just able to stand up here and talk about it, developed the concept for our, our Transportation Department's strategic master plan. When I was before your board on May 3 of this year, presenting the Local Streets and Roads Assessment Presentation, I introduced this concept to you and said I'd come back to talk to you when it was completed, and that's what I'm here to do today. Before I continue, I'd like to acknowledge Margot Yap of Nichols Consulting, who's sitting here as well. We hired Nichols to assist us in this, and then it was a pretty big apple for us to bite into, and we felt we needed some technical expertise. Nichols and Margot, in particular, are the folks who, the California State Association of Counties, and the Engineers Association, and Ligue of Cities, and the Regional Transportation Planning Agencies hired to do the 2008 and 2010 Local Streets and Roads Assessment. So they have a fairly deep bench of understanding of this sort of issue within, within the state of California, and we felt they were very well qualified to assist us. The purpose of the, the overall strategic master plan was to look at directed infrastructure improvements that will either maintain or improve the levels of service and quality of traveling life through, throughout the county. This plan does not address routine maintenance or payment rehabilitation. As I mentioned, that's covered in, in our payment rehabilitation plan. The plan provides suggested prioritization criteria and some initial proposed project priority listing, which we'll talk about. Additionally, the plan also makes some specific recommendations to us, to the Transportation Department, that we need to consider for additional studies or things that we need to look at, where we have insufficient data on some of the systems that we have here in the county. We looked at seven sources, actually, one of them you can't see there, that, that were used, that are authoritative in that they've been provided to us, with the exception of the, two of the lower ones, by either your board or the Ventura County Transportation Commission. Specifically, the County General Plan and the Congestion Management Program are the two most significant ones that are on there. These documents, again, created the framework for the projects that we would look at. And there's a total of about 159 projects that are listed on all of these, in, in all of these different documents. And what we did, and which took quite a bit of time, was to compare all of them and make sure we eliminated all the duplication. For example, when you look at the traffic impact mitigation fee, which is that little .4% there, you would say, "Why is there so little there?" Because most of the TIMF projects are also in the County General Plan or in the Congestion Management Plan. So we, we put them to the highest authoritative document we had, which, which would be then either the General Plan or the Congestion Management Plan. Of those projects, there's roughly $549 million worth of, of work that needs to be done that are improvement projects. 159 projects, $549 million worth of work. The majority of those, as you can see, 82% by the big green slice of pie, are road improvement projects. Those are essentially widening or lane additions, realignments to roads, shoulder widening or additions, or some new construction projects, roads that we don't currently have that we would need to add. With those in mind, our consultant recommended to us some prioritization criteria. They took the time to, to look at what other agencies and community groups use, both locally here up to and including the Federal Highway Administration, and how projects are prioritized for, for work. Traffic safety for us, safety of the structures, meaning that they're structurally sound, and the safety of the public are paramount importance. And although you will see, you won't see specifically safety as a prioritization criteria, it is embedded in every criteria. And if you get into the details of the report, it indicates in there how safety was considered. They recommended to us three specific factors, all of equal weight. The first being user benefit, and that's primarily for a, a road project would be level of service and traffic volume. And I'll give you an example of that here in just a second. The second is, as I mentioned previously, these come from eight different sources. The, the source of the project is considered important. The two most important documents, again, being the County General Plan and the Congestion Management Program, and the next being the TIMF study and the bike master plan, and the remaining ones after that, so from height... the remaining ones after that, so from high to low in terms of score. And then finally, the plan also recommends that we use community support as a third criteria. Currently, we don't have data on community support for individual projects, and it's something that, should you desire us to continue with this prioritization criteria, that we would need to outreach to the community, not on all 159 projects, but clearly on the top projects that are on the priority list. Each of the factors gets a maximum score of five, and there are sub-subsections in those, and again, I'll talk to those in the next example here. For example, for roadway projects, we looked at both level of service and average daily traffic. What you see up here is the score that the level of service would get. For average daily traffic, it goes from high to low, so a score of five goes to those with ADT over 15,000, and a one for those under 5,000. Those are then normalized to a score of, from one to five, and then input. For bikeways, it's essentially the same type of thing. We look at two factors. The criteria that you see here, and in a tractor, by the way, would be either a school, a transit stop, or facility, some other thing that generates a bicycle trip. And then the second criteria is the project's priority in the overall county's bike master plan. So if it got a higher score there, obviously, it should be a higher consideration for us. From that Appendix B that is in the updated plan that I gave you, these are the top-scoring projects. There are nine projects that scored a 10 in the two categories of user benefit, excuse me, in the source of the document. These were sub-sorted based on the average daily traffic, meaning the higher the traffic, the higher the project. So obviously, a road that has much less use would be of less importance. And so these are the list of projects based upon this first cut. Now, this does not include community support, it just includes the first two criteria.
Yes, Supervisor, there goes.
Dave, you know, the Victoria whitening from Gonzalez to Olivas.
Right.
Is currently, what, two lanes?
It's four lanes, two on each side, so it would be widening it to three lanes.
And we're still going to maintain the curve that we have there?
Actually, a couple of years ago, we made a swap with the City of Oxnard, and the county only maintains the portion to right past the bridge, about 250 feet past the bridge. So to do this project the whole way would require a cooperative project with Oxnard, and then to fund a fairly significant portion.
So it would be only to a certain point, because I know that the curve there has been a problem, you know, for traffic.
Correct. Essentially, we own, the county owns, from Olivas Park to just on the Oxnard side of the bridge.
And Oxnard owns all the way from there to Gonzalez.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
So again, these nine projects, just to put in perspective for you, these nine projects that scored the highest equate to $143 million, or roughly a quarter of the total value of the 159 projects. The next eight projects, which are the next highest ones, that receive a score of eight, total $35 million. And then the next 10 projects after that that score seven, so those are the top three scoring areas, total $51 million or 9 percent. So 17 percent are 27 of the projects, the top 27 projects are 40 percent of the value of what's in there. And obviously, there's a lot of smaller projects as you move further down the list. And if you think about the criteria we're using, it makes good sense that it would be that way. Those things that have more benefit to the public are going to likely cost more because they're road widenings or things that affect daily traffic.
Go ahead, Supervisor.
I'm sorry. Let me see, the Santa Clara whitening, the Oxnard, Cielo.
Yes.
Where does that run from, where to where?
It runs from, essentially, from Highway 118, from the Oxnard County line, which is right past the Rice Avenue interchange, to Highway 118.
Is that going to be in conjunction with the new overpass?
Not really. Again, we have no funding for that right now. That's been in the County General Plan since 1985. Again, many of these projects that you see here have been in the General Plan or the Congestion Management Plan for a decade or two or more.
Because some of the concerns I've heard is that we have the overpass going east or north, whatever it is, you know, into Santa Clara, and then it narrows down to a two-lane highway.
Yes, sir. The long-range congestion management plan, if you look at it, widens that to four lanes and widens 118, obviously, from there.
All the way to Central.
To four lanes also, which is, again, a Caltrans project and is fraught with a whole lot of other issues beyond just the traffic congestion that's there.
Okay, but it's in the plan?
Yes. Again, one of the challenges in all of this, again, $549 million, many of these projects have been on the books for a very long time, and typically, since we've not ever prioritized one of these, if somebody drops money on us, we go look to try to do the project, but we've never had a approach to go after these, and this is the first step.
It'll be ready.
To do this.
I appreciate that, because we certainly do want to establish a priority and have that come from the Board of Supervisors. And I had mentioned two that are in your top priority right now, in the top nine or whatever I have questions about. And I can see, it's kind of like, you know, you have something in your inbox long enough, it's no longer pertinent, you know? So I'm just wondering, some of this stuff is so old, that's all I can guess, that's how it's bubbled up. So I do appreciate the fact that you do want to go to the community, come to the supervisors, let's discuss whether these things should even be on here. One of them, for example, that I'm looking at is looking at making Wendy going to four lanes. And to me, that's a residential section where all the homes face the road, and so that one would be a concern. And I'm not sure where the Moore Park widening between Santa Rosa Road and Tierra Hada came from, if that's always, you know, but wherever it came from, I think it's something to discuss, because that will increase congestion, I think, onto Santa Rosa Road. So those two are.
Both of those, ma'am, are in the County General Plan. And the general plan, we use this from 2005.
And I tell you, sometimes you have things in the general plan that, for example, we've decided to have Santa Rosa Road stay to two lanes.
Correct.
It costs so much money to change the general plan sometimes because of cost constraints, we're not on top of that general plan like we should be. I would love to have it updated, but in some cases, it's not. And in those two particular situations, I can see where money is better needed to go, and those two projects offhand don't seem to be needed or popular. And those are two of my criteria.
Again, one of the pieces that is not currently in here, obviously, is the community support, and if there is no support for a project, a zero equates to, "I don't know that we want to do it." And that's where your board has much better sense of that than I do, and for those that we want to proceed with, we will certainly need to go get some gauge of the community support.
Or, better yet, take it off the list, if, you know, we're talking about widening Wendy to four lanes, and when it's a residential neighborhood, and I don't think any resident there wants to see that happen. Yeah, so, and since it's in District 2, I can see better places in District 2, for example, if that's how we're looking at it, too.
I don't know if we're looking at it.
Well, I'm sorry. It just worked out that pretty well, but you think, I didn't see on the list, though it's a very comprehensive list, you know, the issue of the Somas 118 intersection, and what's, well, some of that's Caltrans, I understand.
Yes, ma'am. The Dahlin Road Project is already on my execution plan. These are only projects that were not currently funded, or that are not currently funded, and these are only projects within the county road network. The broader context of those that are in the congestion management plan have to be prioritized by Caltrans or whoever.
Also, looking at the bicycle lane criteria, I would like to discuss that a little bit. We're the unincorporated county, and when we think of bike lanes, it's often connecting areas in the cities. And there are bicycle commuters that travel more than one to three miles, and if we're just prioritizing those short trips for bike lanes, I don't know if that's going to serve the majority of cyclists, but I don't know if, how that breaks down. But I do know that people who ride their bikes to work don't necessarily have two-mile trips. They probably have five, six, nine, seven, you know?
That one to three miles is to the nearest connector, so it's not just the total length of the trip, it's how much bike lane do we have to put to get to the next thing? So that is certainly something that we can look at adjusting.
And I know that one of the things that we asked last time we discussed bike lanes was, when you are widening roads, or not widening, when you are paving roads, just whenever there's an opportunity to go a little bit more with the pavement so that you can pave and add more space to bike lanes, that was just a policy that the board had discussed, and hopefully, that is getting looked at. My final question relates to sidewalks. A sensitive issue, because the, I guess, since Prop 13.
I don't think we do sidewalks, do we?
The county has not been replacing sidewalks. We can get, like we had today, some funds from the Safe Race to School to put new sidewalks in.
Correct.
But it's difficult then, because they then need to be repaired as they get older or as trees uproot them, and the county doesn't have the resources to fund that. However, as I look at, we do get some funding, and it's something that I may bring back to the board, we do get some funding for pedestrian and cycling, and we use those for things like ramping curbs. And I look at areas, for example, in Oak Park and Casacanaho, and maybe that I might have more sidewalks than the other districts in the unincorporated county. But you can ramp all you want, once you get onto that sidewalk, if you're disabled, if you've got a hard going at it, people aren't really protected well on the sidewalks. And putting that all on the, you know, burden of the homeowners to take care of what I think are county sidewalks, to me, is a difficult one, but if we could at least do some kind of cost sharing, and so that might be something I'll be bringing back to the board, just looking at assisting people to get those sidewalks fixed, because it helps everybody. So I don't know if you, you know, that it is, like I said, a sensitive issue, it's probably a policy, it is a policy decision of the Board of Supervisors, but I think that we do have some funding that we can use if we choose to, and perhaps use it less by having it cost-shared with the residents. But I think we need to do what we can to encourage it, and it's also, not only healthy, it's also now part of the mandates of the state of California to get people out of their cars, lower greenhouse gas emissions, and make it easier for kids to walk to school, for example. So I think we need to look at that.
And Madam Chair, I think one of the important things that David mentioned initially was, all this project built in is safety. And safety, I think, is extremely important, especially with the safety school project over in El Rio, is to get these kids off the street, you know, and onto sidewalks. And ultimately, of course, we're going to have to maintain them, but the safety of the children is extremely important, and the safety of everybody, for that matter, even people in bicycles and so forth.
Right. The thing is, we're not maintaining them, you know? We can build them, but we're not maintaining them. I think that is a key.
That's something that we should.
And then, we're also looking at the Transportation Commission. We're going to be receiving far more funds for transit as that, I guess it's Senate Bill.
718.
718 comes through, where we can't use road funds, or transit funds for roads. So we're going to have more.
We're not getting any additional funding, it's just we're being limited in what we can use the funding for.
Yes, we're being limited to what we can use it for, but in the outcome is more funds for transit, less funds for roads, same amount of money. But that, and that's what I'm saying, and those transit funds, to get people to take the bus, they need to walk, and they need to have sidewalks to walk to the bus. And, you know, to me, it all is part of that same picture, we need to be able to make it safe for kids to walk to school, to ride their bikes to school, and that's why I'd like to see some of those funding, instead of making Wendy, for example, four lanes, which, you know, would be a problem in that community. Those funds could be better spent.
Madam Chair, one more question, since you mentioned that funding is going to be used for transit as opposed to roads. What's that going to do to our FTEs and our?
To our staff, for the last two years, we've not budgeted any of that funding into our budget, with the expectation it was going to go away. We've actually gotten a little extra money this year that is just in the road fund, and right now, we're using that to do road.
So you're doing this through attrition, getting ready for that date?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, I know we're probably getting into the weeds with you on a lot of this stuff, you have a presentation to finish, but at some point, you'll come back and we'll talk about all those priorities and all that stuff, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, so we're, sorry to interrupt.
And we're not approving, as you said, the listing that you have there, but it's good to get that input.
That input is what I think you want, right, Dave?
So onward.
The one additional thing that the master plan recommends is some study updates that we need to do, or some new studies to do, where we don't have good information on the systems. The major planning studies, as you see up there, that are recommended, probably the most significant is a master drainage plan. All of you've been around the county a while, you know that most of the water that flows on our roads flows via surface, it comes down the hill, goes across the road, and goes somewhere else. We certainly don't have the wherewithal to make all of that go away, but what we need to do is take a hard look at where we have the critical areas of flooding concerns and everything else, and do a master drainage study that incorporates looking at those areas and what potential projects we might need to do to assist in those areas. Typically, what happens here, as you know, we have a big storm, roads get washed out, we go fix the road, three years later, it happens, we do the same thing again. Some of that's just the physical ability to fix that is not there, but in some cases, it's a matter of identifying ways to divert the water or move it elsewhere. A pedestrian master plan, again, Supervisor Parks, as you mentioned, that's not something that we do have, is a plan that looks at where do pedestrians move throughout the county road network, and how can we better assist that. We have a bike master plan, but we don't have one for people who are specifically walking, so that's another recommendation. And then a bridging plan, although we have quite a bit of information we've gotten from Caltrans, over half the bridges that the county is responsible for are under 20 feet and therefore exempt from any look by Caltrans, and so we need to have a long-range plan at looking at those and do they need replacements. We've just done a study of those, that we've just gotten back and we're taking a look, but there's a plan that needs to be associated with that of overall, either significant repairs or replacements.
Mr. Fleisch, could you speak a little bit more about the bridges, you know, at the Southern California Association of Governments, they were, you know, there's a list of bridges that are, you know, found to be inadequate, and some have said that doesn't mean they're unsafe, and if you could just address what we have here in the county?
Correct. We have only a small number of bridges that we've been given, or have been notified by Caltrans that are considered deficient in some manner. In some cases, when they call them structurally deficient, it just means that it doesn't meet the current width requirements for a bridge. It doesn't mean that they're going to fall down. There's a scoring system from 0 to 100, that each bridge gets a score. I believe we have four bridges that we've been notified that we need, that are in that category. Three of those have fairly minor repairs that need to be done. The only significant one that we have that has a sufficiency rating of 15 out of 100 is a Bridge Road Bridge, which is off of 150, just as you're coming out of Santa Paula. And it's a bridge that was built in 1910. It's a riveted steel bridge. We recently replaced the decking on the bridge, but there are some other issues with it. We just have awarded $50,000, we got bridge funding, to do an initial look at that bridge and make a determination conceptually of what can we do. But other than those four bridges, the rest of the bridges that we have, that are within the Caltrans system, we don't have any notifications if there's any concerns. We've done quite a bit of work on the South Mountain Road Bridge, Victoria, those in the past, and so they're in good shape.
Thank you.
And finally, to conclude, again, back to the recommended board actions, we recommend that you receive and file the master plan, provide additional staff guidance on the prioritization criteria, and the project list that's provided in the plan, with the intent that we would take that guidance, and when we come back to you for our capital improvement program for the next fiscal year, that we would bring that updated list.
David, in the second, so the additional studies, you had the Storm Drain Facilities. Is Strube included in that, in El Rio, and also Silver Strand?
Well, there's existing facilities that are in both of those locations now, and there's maintenance that is being done on them. We don't really have a plan that addresses improvements to any of those. Strube's new, so we presume, I mean, it was designed to the current requirements.
That was in conjunction with River Park?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And Silver Strand, you know, the?
Again, that has a long history, as you're well aware. That was put in a number of years ago, and it was a compromise between what money was available and what we thought we could do, and that system exists.
I think the pumps is probably what the issue there, right?
Right, and those actually, the Watership Protection District manages those pumps, and so they have funding to take care of those.
That's the other department within your agency. Okay, thank you. That's the other department within your agency. Okay, thank you.
So with that, there are no other questions?
Or venting?
Just appreciation for doing all this work and bringing this forward. As you said at the beginning, it's the first time it's been comprehensively done, so it really gives us a good foundation to work from. Appreciate that.
Jeff?
Thank you.
But to say, I appreciate you going long-term, too. Too much, we do too many short-term things. And when you look long-term, you see things in a whole different view. So I think it's the right thing to do for all of us to understand. And you need to figure out where we're coming from up here. You can see there could be some different opinions.
And then some of the monies are going to disappear. They're going into transit, so that's important, too, for long-term.
All right. So Mr. Powers, do you have a comment, too?
Just real quick. I just think this is the first time that you've done a little comprehensive presentation like this, so to thank you to Jeff, and Ben, and Howard, and Dave for putting this together, because I think it's a lot. To summarize it like this very effectively, interesting about the staff piece. Over the last 20 years, 30% reduction in staff, and I imagine no reduction in work demand. So a lot of hard work going there. And then just to clarify, too, so the board members can continue to give you feedback on their thoughts on the prioritization criteria and the projects themselves until you come back in May. Yes, thank you.
Good. Yes, some of that seems like it had to be dusted off. I know, there's some old stuff in there and some new, and it's good to be able to get this all updated. So thank you for taking the initiative on this. We have a motion and a second, I believe. If we could, I please vote. And it passes on a 4-0. And-
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, I believe, is item number, is our first 10-30 times certain, is that right? Item 22 and 33.
That's correct.
And I think we wanted to hear 33 first. That's at least what my notes say.
Yes. Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers. Reddy Pacala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. I will be presenting item number 22 and 33. Item number 22 is a public hearing for the proposed water rate increase for Ventura County Waterwork District Number 19. Item number 33 is a request for your board to authorize staff to apply for a $5 million loan with the United States Department of Agriculture. District provides water supply to the community of Somas and surrounding areas. As your board is aware, district operates as an enterprise fund. All of the expenses within the district are paid by the ratepayers. District water supply comes from local groundwater and also from imported water from Metropolitan Water District through Cayegus Municipal Water District. And the district water distribution system is in need of replacement. Some of the water lines within the district are between 30 and 80 years old. To provide a reliable water supply to its customers, the district needs to invest approximately $10 million to replace the aged water lines and also make some improvements to the water quality. District's imported water costs are going up by 8% effective January 1st, 2012. The power costs are estimated to go up by 5%. To offset the increases in the water supply costs, and also to start setting money aside for the replacement of these water lines, we are recommending that your board approve a 4% water rate increase for Waterwork District Number 19, beginning with the January 2012 billing cycle. As you are aware, the water rates are subject to Proposition 218 protest hearings. Clerk of the Board has received two letters, which are included in your board package. Our office in Moore Park did not receive any telephone calls about the proposed water rate increase. The five-member advisory committee appointed by your board has unanimously concurred with the proposed 4% water rate increase. We are recommending that your board approve recommendations in our item number 22 for the proposed water rate increase, item number 33, an application to seek a $5 million loan from United States Department of Agriculture for those improvements in the districts. This concludes my verbal presentation. I'll be glad to take any questions you might have.
Do you have speaker card? Shall we do the speaker card first? Mr. Roland Bauer.
Good morning. I'm a user of the water at District 19. Been there for 40 years. Have two different meters, a domestic, I mean, a house as well, not my own house, but a house, as well as one that handles the other 20 acres. I received a letter about the rate increase, and there's some things on there that are troubling to me. One of them, they're talking about the water improvement treatment facility. They're talking about taking manganese and iron out of the water. Now, I've been part of another water company that did that in the Los Poses area, and it was a complete boondoggle. We spent millions of dollars to take this few percent of iron and manganese out of water, which is beneficial to crops. It's not great for drinking, but it's not, it's a secondary standard, so it's not a problem. And at least 70 or 80% of the water in our district is used for agricultural purposes. So taking that, building a high-flooding treatment center, facility, is a waste of money for the county. And in opposition, I called the minute I got this letter. I called the district and asked for some breakdown on costs of things. Friday, I received a list of projects that totaled to $5 million of what they would like to do. Now, I can't go over that in two days to see exactly which ones are needed and stuff. But we had a 12% increase in February, and until some of these things are looked into, and somebody gets an idea of why we would need a filtration project to take iron and manganese out, I would really oppose it. And I think until that happens, I don't think there should be a rate increase.
Thank you.
Any questions?
And I would imagine the reason why isn't, it isn't, as you said, not the greatest for drinking, and it not only supplies the agriculture land, it also supplies homes. So that's why they're looking at it.
Oh, that's very true. That's true. But you have to look at the benefits to the whole district of putting in that kind of money. The one in Los Poses, which is the water I drink, because that's where I live, that treatment plant is sitting idle because it's not needed. And you're talking to only a couple percent of, or a couple parts per million of each of those chemicals that are in the water. So to spend money and charge more people, and it's a waste of county money. I would recommend they do something that's more needed than to waste it on a treatment plant.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Appreciate that. Does the board have a question? No, not now. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the customer brought issues which have been challenging for the district for a number of years. For the last six, seven years, we have been working with the community, with advisory committee, about how to improve the water quality. The challenge we have is, we have imported water costs almost three to four times as expensive as the local water supply. To keep the water rates as low as possible, we have been trying to use the local water as much as possible. By doing so, we have been getting lots of water quality complaints. I think Supervisor Forest Office and Supervisor Parks Office have seen some of the photographs from our homes where the brown water has been delivered to the homes. At this time, we have been maintaining this water quality by flushing the lines more frequently. By doing so, we are wasting quite a bit of water. As far as our customers' experience about iron-manganese treatment facility, at this time, within District 19, we have one iron-manganese treatment facility that works very well in removing the iron-manganese. In District 1, we have two iron-manganese treatment facilities. We believe by constructing this iron-manganese treatment facility, we are able to provide high-quality water to our domestic customers. So once we are able to do that, then once we start replacing the aged water lines, I think we will provide a good water quality to our customers.
Mr. Powers, do you want to comment first?
Just real quick to sort of clarify, by implementing these infrastructure improvements and improving the water quality of the local water quality, it'll reduce our dependence on the imported water.
Yes, sir.
I like that word, clarify.
Yeah, the question I had, you said you have an 8% cost for, to supply water, and a 5% for utilities. That's what, about 13%? And you're only increasing 4%. How do we make up the difference?
We import approximately 20% of our water from Cayegus. 80% is from the local groundwater. So if you look at the weighted rate increase, it's approximately 4% for-
Oh, of that cost, okay. So you're not passing the whole thing, because the utilities and the cost as a pass-through?
We're just passing through the increased cost in water supply.
Okay, okay.
Supervisor, one?
Reddy, I know you've worked really hard out there, and that's because you've got a lot of complaints, and I remember that. What is the, what is our makeup? How many residential customers to ag customers? Do you remember the number?
We have a total of 1,050 customers. Of the 1,050, 140 customers are ag customers with more than five acres.
Okay. So most of your people are dealing with is the people that are just using it as their home.
Yes, sir.
And that's where a lot of that comes down to. The gentleman makes a good argument, you know, he hates to take some of the minerals out, that that's good for ag. On the other side, though, in order for those other 900-plus customers, in order to keep that brown, we've seen tubs with brown water, we've seen it ruin people's appliances, we've seen all the stuff it does. And we're, it's going to cost you five or so million dollars or $10 million to put a system in to help purify this water, right?
Well, the $5 million we are recommending includes one well-hate treatment, which is about $1 million. The rest of the $4 million would go for the replacement of the pipelines.
And I do know that you said between 30 and 80 years. We're all in between 30 and 80. Are we going to be replaced up here, too?
[laughing]
But, no, willingly, yes. No, I agree with you. I know that that's part of, I mean, but there's some of that, because some people would say, well, is it something somebody should do locally on their own house? But I think it's, when you talk about 900 customers trying to, it'd be way more expensive for everybody to do that versus you trying to do it for $1 million to do that, right?
Yes, sir.
Right. And because there was an awful lot of complaints. I know Supervisor Parks and Alhobis are probably dealing with more of these stuff, that it was rare, people were spending hundreds of dollars and thousands of dollars fixing appliances, and, you know, there's the disdain their kids having to take baths in brown, brown water. It was really a problem.
Yeah. Well, one of the reasons why we are recommending these improvements now is we have been able to maintain the water quality by buying imported water at low cost for the last 13 years or so. And when Metropolitan Cayegus stopped selling imported water at low cost, then we switched into the local groundwater. At that time, we had been getting 140, 150 water quality complaints from our customers.
When was that switch?
It was switched in 2009.
Nine?
Yeah.
Yeah. But going back to your 4%, I appreciate you working. I know that we've gone through a lot of water issues, and 4% rates is kind of a reasonable rate that we, I think we can all live with, as we talked about before, the 10, 12, 18s that we were dealing with, and trying to find a way to keep our current quality up by using our local water as a way to keep these rates down. So I appreciate that.
Yeah. Supervisor, one?
Just a question. The speaker made a comment about a treatment plant sitting idle.
Pardon me?
A treatment plant sitting idle? The Los Poses treatment plant?
I'm not-
That's in the Crestview Water District. That's not in District 19.
Oh, it's Crestview, okay.
Crestview, yes, one sitting idle.
Okay.
Maybe we can buy it. This is new, a new addition to my district, this area, and it is shocking to me to see the pictures of people in their homes showing, you know, brown, red water, you know, filling their bathtubs, and can't wash clothes on Monday because it turns their clothes red. You know, these things, I don't, they're just absolutely not appropriate. We need to do what we can, I think, to fix this. And one of the things that will have coming before us is our legislative platform. And what I'm asking is, right now, those two constituents, manganese, is not considered something that is used for grant funds to remove. We can't, you know, it's not considered constituent for grant funding. And so we're looking at doing a loan. But I would like to add that to our platform, be asking that we do that, because these residents, you know, are, you know, for no fault of their own, have really bad water problems. And while it may not be considered a health hazard in small quantities, I think it's still something that needs to be addressed. And I hate to have to have that all be reflected on their rates. If we can do some grant funding, that would be the way to go.
As I mentioned, our estimates are about $10 million to improve the system, so we're only requesting $5 million as we can improve the water quality in some of the priority water lines. And we'll continue to look for the grants for the other funding. In the past, we have looked for Ara funding, we have looked for some other grants. Unfortunately, we did not qualify for any of those grants because of the income levels of the community within District 19.
And the community is, you know, has a variety of incomes, some that are higher incomes, some that are very low income, too. So I think that needs to be considered. But I would like to see in the future us being able to get grant funding for that. It's needed. So with that, we have, yes?
Go out and you get this loan. What will that reflect, what will it look like in the rates after you get a loan?
Our projection is a 5% rate increase for next year.
5% in order to help pay for the loan? Okay. So is it one time, once that 5% is in there, the rest of it will go back to your normal?
Correct.
Okay.
And, you know, it'll be good for the agriculture community, too, if we can do it with grant funds, and they can continue to have the lower-cost water. So I would, I hope that we are able to pursue that and get that considered a constituent, so we can get grant funding instead of having to do loans for this. So with that, we have two items before us. The first one is the going out for the loan, is that correct?
Going for 33.
So we'll go ahead and vote for item 33 first. It also makes sense to have that one go first. And my screen is busy, so can we do a voice vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposition? Seeing none, that item 33 passes on a 4-0 vote. And so now we'll go on to item 22, which is the rate increase to help assist that loan. And with that, I'll go ahead and put the motion on the floor, and hopefully in the future, we'll be able to do that through loans, through grants instead of loans. And that also passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bauer. Item 34, then, is our other 10-30 times certain. And we'll be hearing 34, and then 23, as I understand, with our treasurer tax collector. Good morning, Judge.
Good morning. I have, I am Stephen Hints, Ventura County's treasurer tax collector. I have two items on the agenda today. Item number 34, which, if it does not displease the board, I will present first, and then the regular monthly report of investment by Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector, Robert Hanson. The first item has to do with some changes to the investment policy. As I'm sure the board knows, but for all of our viewers in the ether, my, your delegation of authority to me to manage the county investment fund is based on the investment policy, which the treasurer signs and the board supervisors sign, which delegates, states what sorts of things the treasurer can invest in as part of the pool. We have two very minor changes to make, and it's required that whenever changes are made in the investment policy, that it come back for re- in the investment policy, that it come back for review and approval by the board. The first change is on page five of the investment policy, below the center line, where it talks about medium-term notes and deposit notes, which speaks about corporate bonds. For years, there's been, the last line has been, "This market still lacks the dynamic liquidity necessary for it to operate as efficiently as the county would like." Mr. Hanson and I have discussed that, and it is our conclusion that that is no longer an accurate statement and that it should be stricken from the investment policy. This proposal was examined by the Treasury Oversight Committee recently, which approved striking that particular language. The second change is on page six of the investment policy in the section, again, just below the midline of the page, certificates of deposit. These are bank, financial institution certificates of deposit. For years, it had been 100,000, which was the FDIC level for insured. That level is now $250,000, and for the sake of actually having it comport with what those instruments could look like, we recommend those changes.
Do you have a motion?
Yes.
Good. And a second, supervisor. And that's a 4-0. And you're up for the next one.
Marvelous. Mr. Hanson will deliver the report of investments, and thank you very much.
Robert Hanson, Assistant Treasurer, Tax Collector. Well, October looked a little bit better. We saw some improvement in the industrial production numbers, capacity utilization, personal spending, construction spending, and gross domestic product, which is probably the best measure of economic activity in the country, rose from 1.3 to 2.5. So, the economy is slowly but surely improving. Interest rates are not going up at this point. I think the last forecast I read for the 10-year, which is what real estate mortgages watch now, would stay in this 1.6 range and maybe go to 2% at the end of the second quarter next year. So, low rates are here. The housing market, commercial and residential, is what's slowing it down a great deal, but there was a huge glut, and it was a -- it is still a huge problem, but it's slowly digesting itself. And all in all, as we wait it out, we are doing better, and the trend is slight improvement. So, that's good for our country. Other than that, like I said, rates for the overall earnings on the portfolio should begin to drop slightly.
Mr. Hanson, right now is a good time to buy a house, right? It's a good time to -- they're way down in the --
I really do think so, honestly. I really do. I think not only it's a two-for-one, it's not only the prices, five or 10 years from now, people are going to kick themselves.
That's right.
But once again, it's location, location, location. So, you know, Ventura County is great.
The mortgage rates are down and the prices of homes are --
And that's the other big thing.
That's right.
And fixed mortgage is not variable.
That's right.
So, you know what your payments are going to be, and you can live with them.
The PI, then. Right.
Good time to refinance.
Good time to refinance, too.
Just to make a comment that in your letter, I noted that Standard &amp; Poor's gave you the highest rating for both liquidity, excuse me, for both investment safety and liquidity.
Correct.
So, very impressive, the two primary objectives.
And it's been that way since it started right after Orange County. So, we're very happy that it is staying at that level. There's very few people that have that same rating.
Keep doing the good work, though.
Thank you.
The housing market is not only -- it seems like it's not only nationally in the same position, but we're seeing that throughout, you know, other countries too. It's a good time to buy, but no one's got the funds right now.
And geographically, this is a great area. If you're looking at Miami, Florida, certain parts of Texas, parts of Chicago, New York City, it's horrible. So, we're not nearly in as bad a shape as some other areas. And I would like to say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Thank you.
I wore my Christmas tie because my wife bought it for me.
Merry Christmas.
Shopping locally. Okay. We have a motion. Supervisor goes the second. Supervisor, long, and if we could please vote. That does pass unanimously. Thank you.
If I could make one more comment very briefly. We put in an item on the addendum, and I would like to thank the Queen Mother and Rosa for their help in expediting it. They are so helpful all the time. And also, I would like to thank Sandy Bickford from the auditor's office as we get ready to apportion the property taxes we're collecting. Good job, Christine. I missed all that.
Okay. So, that -- does that conclude our regular agenda? And now, all we have is our closed session items? And I'll ask County Council if he anticipates an announcement on closed session?
Yes, I do anticipate an announcement.
Okay, so, we are anticipating an announcement, and we'll --
Let them hang around for a while.
Will we be able to do that item first? Okay. Okay. All right. And we'll go ahead and close our adjourn from our closed session.